Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming. Can everyone take their seats? And if you had a chance, if not, if you
I just want to make sure we speak into the microphones clearly so everyone on Zoom can hear us as well.
I'm calling the meeting to order at 4:31 on November 3rd, 2025.
Roll call. Vice Chair Comra.
Here.
Member Delgavio.
Here.
Member Sullivan.
Here.
Chair Lindsay is noted absent and Member Mittelman has recused as the applicant for item three.
Call for changes to the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda. However, there are a number of desk items for item number three, the single project on the agenda which will be mentioned in the presentation.
Thank you. We've all received the desk items and reviewed them. So everyone's seen them. At this point, the public is invited to address the board on matters and the public and people in on Zoom on matters not on the agenda tonight. So if you have anything that doesn't pertain that to Still Creek, let us know. Hold your hand up or just raise your hand.
And for the member or the member of the public joining via Zoom, please use the raise hand feature if you'd like to comment. There's no raised hand.
Okay. Consent agenda? Do we have a consent agenda tonight?
It's just the minute. There's two sets of minutes on the consent agenda.
Oh, that's right. Does anyone want to make a motion about those? A motion that we approve them?
A second.
Consent agenda approved?
Vice Chair Comra.
Yes.
Member Delgavio.
Yes.
Member Sullivan.
Yes.
Okay. At this point, we are going to be discussing Ten Still Creek Road. The Mittelman Capone families project. At this time, I would like to invite staff, Sarah, to present the staff report.
Yes, thank you. Let me pull it up real quick. Okay. Thank you. So I will be introducing the project at Ten Still Creek Road. The project includes the construction of a new main residence with an attached garage, JADU and ADU and one detached ADU for a total of two ADUs and one JADU. The ASRB last reviewed this project at its March 3rd hearing. The ASRB made recommendations to the applicant and asked them to return for conceptual design review. Instead of returning for the conceptual design review, the applicant submitted a formal design review application, installed story polls, and staff felt it would be more productive to proceed with the formal design review, given that the applicant provided all the detailed information required for formal design review. So the applicant has made updates to the project in response to the ASRB recommendations and town staff review of the project. And I'll just want to go through them kind of one by one. So the first was the ASRB asked the applicant to revise the locations of the ADUs. So the applicant did not move the location of the attached ADU. When I say attached ADU, I'm referring to this one here. Instead, they focused on reducing the volume by recessing the second story. The applicant also revised the detached ADU height. That's this one across the road. Reduced the detached ADU height to be in compliance with the height requirements for ADUs on downsloping lots. The second thing, the ASRB asked the applicant to relocate the garage and JADU structure further away from the road and closer to the main residence. So that's the structure here. The applicant stated that moving the structure would impact the healthy trees that are proposed to remain and that also this structure acts as screening of the bridge and portions of the main residence. Next, the ASRB asked for the two carports to be removed from the scope of the project. So the applicant removed the two carports that are proposed near the road. Those were, there was one located here that's been removed and another across the road here that has been removed. The ASRB also asked for changes to the massing of the attached ADU, such as removing vaulted, the vaulted space or stepping it into the hillside. And the applicant noted that the massing was addressed by terracing the front's street-facing side, which reduced the overall volume. The ASRB also asked for a reduction or removal of the tower element and the applicant noted that the tower element was reduced by three feet to decrease the overall height of the main residence or along with that. But further reduction was not possible to the, due to the height requirements and access for the JADU to the rest of the main residence. In addition to the comments just noted, the applicant also reduced the number of ADUs from four to three in total. Two ADUs and one JADU. So the detached one is just one ADU, whereas before it was two. The height of the residence was reduced to be no taller than the maximum allowed 30 feet, which eliminated the request for a height variance. The variance to setbacks was changed to a setback exception and the applicant provided evidence showing other properties in the neighborhood that also have exceptions to setbacks. And lastly, the applicant provided a letter from their civil engineer stating that the 35% slopes were man-made due to previous development and prior to them being man-made, the slopes were less than 35%, which eliminated the request for a variance to encroach into the 35% slopes. So due to these project revisions, the applicant is now requesting only a maximum residence size exception and a setback exception. And both of those exceptions will require planning commission review. Staff did receive a couple of desk items. The first being just a letter from various neighbors asking the ASRB to do a site visit so they have a chance to view the story polls, as well as letters from various neighbors listing their concerns and comments for the project. And there was also a letter from an attorney expressing support of the project. So the goal for today's hearing is to provide a recommendation to the planning commission. The applicant is available and may make a presentation and you may ask the applicant questions. The ASRB shall also hear any comments from the, any members of the public. And after everyone has had a chance to speak about the project, the ASRB shall review the evidence and testimony and make a recommendation. The, so the recommendation could be one of the following. The ASRB may make a recommendation of approval as presented. They may make a recommendation of approval with specific changes or the ASRB may recommend denial with specific findings for denial. And then that recommendation from the ASRB will be forwarded to the planning commission as the planning commission is the final approval body for the project. So that concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions.
At this point, does the board have any questions of staff?
Could you take a moment to go through the renderings showing the property from the street according to the design? So you can get a visual look of that.
You said renderings. Do you want the renderings or elevations?
Yeah, there you go.
This one?
Yeah, that's more like what I'm, yeah. Thank you.
So this is, sorry, if you wanted a question, I can answer, but this is looking at the attached ADU here and in the back is the main residence. I can zoom in a little. Yeah.
That's great. Thank you.
No, 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 it's fine. But we will have a chance to take all public comments. So I think when we open it up to the public, then you'll have a chance to ask these questions. Right. And you'll go back to this. So let's just wait until we open it up to the public. At this point, it's just the staff asking questions of, or the board asking questions of the staff. Okay. No, it's fine. Yeah, thank you.
And I'll just clarify the sort of steps we'll proceed tonight is of questions asked of staff. Planning, the applicant will have an opportunity to present the project and then the board may ask questions of the applicant. And then after that, each member of the public can have a three-minute comments. Any comments or questions should be directed to the board and not to other members of the public. After that is completed, the ASRB will deliberate on the project and then will formalize the recommendation to the planning commission. As Sarah noted, the planning commission will take final action on the project and any decision made by the planning commission could be appealed to the town council. Right now, the planning commission meeting is scheduled for November 9th. And so also those 10-day notices will be mailed out for all property owners within 300 feet.
Sage, when the planning commission gets our recommendation, do they also, have they also seen all the desk items?
So yeah, so the planning commission will get the entire record. So everything that the ASRB has in their packet today, along with all of the desk items that have been submitted today, they'll have all of that information as well as a staff report to the planning commission and any other further information that is submitted between this meeting and the planning commission meeting.
Thank you. Did you have any other?
No further questions.
I have a question. When looking at the renderings, it does, and especially the nighttime renderings, it doesn't appear to show any of the 78 fixtures that are on the perimeter of the building. And I'm wondering if there's someplace that they are shown beside the plan, actual floor plan. And also part B of that question is, do we know what the post lamp or bollard lamp looks like? We do know what the barn fixture looks like. It was not in the legend if I'm not mistaken.
Sorry, I want to make sure I understand your question. So the renderings don't show it, but these are elevations that are showing the locations of those exterior lights? Is that what you were looking for?
It's showing the ones that are on the house, but there are in total 78 fixtures.
Like the site lighting? So it doesn't show it like on elevations, but it shows on like a site plan, kind of like a lighting plan? Sorry, one second. So in terms of like where those, the site lighting is, that's what you're seeing here. And then we do have photos of the fixtures. If you want to see them, I can pull them up and just take me a second.
So that's approximately 30 and it reads 78 if I got it, if I got it straight.
There. So then there's, on this side, there's additional ones. So let me go there. That's showing on this plan. It's showing additional locations here and here.
About 14-ish. So I guess I'm just saying that when you look at the renderings or the nighttime renderings, all that's kind of missing. So I'm trying to have an understanding of what the overall lighting, when a person is driving up or down the road, what's it really going to look like? Are we really lighting up this hill with 78 fixtures? And the 78 counts landscape fixtures. It doesn't also count all the cans that are in underneath the roofs and things like that.
That would count all the building fixtures and the site fixtures. So that's the total. So you look at the floor plans, identify the ones on the building as well as the elevations. And then the site lighting plan will show all the site lighting fixtures. Renderings typically don't show them. It's just up to how someone renders something.
I did have a question about, I think at one point, Sarah, can you, where is the trail that sort of butts up to the property? And is the ADU encroaching on that trail or how? I know that it was discussed at one of the earlier meetings. Is it the safety? It's, it's, it's not a trail. It's just, okay, okay. Yeah, I'm just wondering what that's, some, one of the, somebody mentioned.
There's, there's just, there's no official trail on the property. There's no trail easement for equestrian or pedestrian trails. I believe what was being referred to is the area that is where the driveway is, so to speak. There's kind of a cut trail there now, but there's no official easement or installed trail.
But so the people have been using that trail because there's a little structure at the end of that trail. It's like a road.
Have to defer to the applicant. There's nothing, there's nothing.
Go through the driveway, their driveway to get to?
It's not, it's not an easement to access a neighboring property, but the applicant may better be able to speak to it.
And I had one more question and it was the percentage of lighting, light fixtures that are shown on the main residence seems to be immense. Is there a percentage that's been calculated or allowed? Because I know other projects that we've worked on, we've adjusted a reduction in the amount of fixtures to affect the exterior and the neighbors. Is there a percentage of how many? Because if you look at it, I mean, there's hardly any space.
There's no, there's no requirement of percentages of light fixtures.
Light windows.
Oh, there's no percentage of window requirements on projects.
Or maximums?
Or maximums. So that's just a, it's just a design consideration. So with this project and what we're bringing forward tonight is specifically responses to the comments from the last ASRB meeting. And that is really where the focus of this particular presentation is.
Joe, don't, don't worry. We haven't forgotten you. We just have an order that will follow. So. So we'll, we'll, we'll wait until the public.
Ask them questions first, then he speaks and you speak.
Okay. Okay. Do we have any more questions to the board at this point on the project? At this time, I am going to invite the applicant to make a presentation. If they want. They don't have to.
Is that three minutes?
Hi, my name is Kristin New.
Can you speak a little?
Sorry, my apologies. Hi, my name is Kristin New. I'm the applicant for Ten Still Creek. I've spoken here before, but I haven't spoken to Member Sullivan. So thank you very much again for all of your guidance and your comments and especially from Sage and Sarah for their helpful guidance in directing this project and progressing it forward. I'm hap, do I answer questions? Like there are questions that you guys had now or is that?
No, this is just for you to, if there's anything, I mean, you, the project has been presented by the architect.
Yes, correct.
So if you have any additional information.
I do not. Thank you. Thank you for your work on this project. That's all. Thank you.
You know, at this point, what we're going to do is open it up to the public, but we want everyone to have a chance to, to speak and give us our comments and as well as in the audience and online. So we're going to try to limit it.
Oh, we have the applicant's architect on Zoom. I'm not sure if they want to speak at all.
Oh, about the project?
Yeah. Hi, Sage. Thanks. I, I think it might be, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I think it might be useful. I'm assuming I can share my screen. I, I do have a three-dimensional computer model of the changes that we made and you know, they're very similar to what the renderings are, except for it's, I can move around the model more easily. So you can kind of see what the, the result, results are of the changes that we made. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen real quick so you can see that and I'll just take you through it. I'm assuming you can see this. So I just wanted to, this is just a way to take a look at the, the change that we made to the massing. Primarily, you know, we lowered, we lowered the entire main residence into the ground. We also lowered the roof. So the profile of the main residence is lower than what it was originally. The other thing, the attached ADU, which is this ADU right here, this is the ADU that used to have a two-story facade all the way out to this position. And what we did is we took the second floor and shifted it. So ostensibly, we stepped the second floor back a little way so that there would be this sort of stepped effect from the ground up to the roof. We also lowered the roof of that ADU and pitched it towards the back. So the lowest portion of the, of the, of the roof, the slope of the roof is here at the front. So towards the street profile. And then the, the higher portion of it is toward the back of the hill, sort of following the hillside. The other thing of note is that you'll see that we removed all of the covered parking. So the carports are gone. We had one here that was a single-story roof with four columns. That's been removed. And then likewise, across the way here, we had covered parking over on this side. And that has also been removed. Also, the lower ADU across the road, its profile has been reduced so that from the road, it presents a, a, a smaller profile than it did before. And so those are the, the major changes and I'll leave this up here in case anyone has a question.
I, I have a couple of questions. So you did lower the tower then, right?
We did lower the tower and we also broke the tower into two so we could reduce the, the need for variance. There is a require, because this is an elevator, basically an elevator shaft. I think there's a requirement, Sage can, can comment on this, but the, there's an allowable encroachment for an elevator area, but the tower was lowered. Yes.
And then the other question that came up with one of the neighbors, now that you have a driveway in for the ADU across the road, are they able to use that driveway if they needed access to that safety road or?
Well, I do. I think that's a question for Kristin and David. I, you know, this is private property and and, and having someone drive over your property to access their property, I suspected could, you know, bring up other liability issues. But I think that's a question for more of a legal question. I think more of a question for David.
I'm looking at a design question. The way that it's done, I mean, people have been used to using this trail.
Sure. Yeah, the driveway, yeah, we positioned the driveway.
Do they not have access?
We, we positioned the driveway in a, in a, in a spot where it would allow access to that.
Oh, okay. So how would they just, can you show us how, if they were on the road, how they would get to that little structure that's down that safety road?
If this is allowed, they could just go right through here.
But say it's not allowed.
Well, I, that, that's a question that is more for the owners than it is for me, I would say.
Okay.
And I'll let David and, I'll let David and Kristin answer that question.
I can come to the microphone since that way Jim can hear me. So yes, there, the current, the trail as it is referred to is part of a series of old skid trails that are all over the entire area from its history of logging. One of, when I met on the site with the residents of number seven Still Creek, Joan and her husband Hans, we did discuss that because of the, that the sighting of, of the lower, of that lower ADU across the road, that a corner of it touches into the current trail. However, there is nothing to say that you, there is still, A, there is still room to pass a vehicle through. B, because of the improvements that will create more of a driveway area, since there have also been issues expressed by neighbors that there shouldn't be cars on the road, that there should be adequate room for cars to pull off the road. And so as part of that improvement to improve the grading, that should continue to allow access in the case of the emergency. The building that I believe Christina had referred to, that's a disused workshop on our neighbor's property and that can be accessed by not just a driveway that comes, or not, it's not a driveway, by an access, again, part of that old skid trail system that comes off of their driveway, but an additional skid trail that goes up onto what is their lawn area, which is then also accessible to the road separately and, and without actually driving onto our property. So in a sense, it offers a throughput that is more at grade rather than going up a steeper portion of driveway, rather than going up a steeper skid trail onto the lawn. But that area is part of the improvements in grading of that driveway to allow cars and vehicles to pull entirely off the road. Does that answer the question? Excellent. Thank you.
Did you say one more thing? Roughly how far off the road would the cars be just to make them comfortable? If a car was parked there, how much, any clue?
It's hard to tell what these subjective expectations are.
Well, actually, now that I, I have you. When, I know there's a lot of parking because there's a lot of structures and it's required to have these parking spots. How, how close to the road are these parking spots?
I believe that they, that you can't, for example, if you look at the ADU, it's hard to like visually tell without the plans. Sarah, could you pull up, for example, the one across the, is that, is that the one of contention that is across the road?
I'm just kind of curious when you're driving down the road and people are, are in the parking spots that you've designated, how close are those to the road?
So you can, there, there is the easement that is sort of the thick black line. Yes, thank you. So there, there is one spot that was requested. It's hard to balance the seemingly conflicting demands of we do not want cars on the road. We want no parking on the road. So we create spaces off the road for cars, but that is also contentious. So the one, these are within the easement, the one across the way. I believe that that was referred, the parking stall is how it's referred to. From the middle of the road, I don't have an exact measurement. I would assume that that's.
Oh, but it is, it is within the easement.
They're showing, and then the parking spot on site is shown at just shy of 24 feet from the roadway. And then the parking across the street. So the, the site is required to have a total of six parking spaces. So four for the main residence and one for each of the ADUs. And so, so they have two inside of the garage and then they could put another easily three in front of the house, as well as one across the street. And so the ones in front of the house, looking at the dimensions, you're probably 18 plus another, I would say 20 feet or so. So you're about, you know, close to 40 feet from the roadway for where the required number of spaces would be.
40 feet.
If you parked in front of the garage, if you parked closer in this pullout area, that would be about 18 feet as they're showing from the right.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah. So, so there will be no fencing on this property because a fence has to be 20 feet.
The only fencing is behind the attached, yes, thank you. There is some fencing there that is intended to have like a small fenced-in yard, presumably for a dog or kids. Presumably for a dog or kids. But it's not. Towards the front of the property.
There's no other fencing is proposed. Fencing has different requirements, open fencing up to six feet tall. On a private road, it has to be ten feet away, whereas on a public road, it needs to be twenty feet away. If you do a vehicle gate, it needs to be twenty-five feet away. Solid fencing needs to be fifty feet away. So it just depends. But none is proposed.
This is a private road. So fencing is required ten feet.
If you did open fencing, you could do six-foot-tall fencing that is ten feet away from the roadway. So being outside of that easement, almost any fencing right up to that easement line would be more than ten feet away.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any more questions of the applicant for the board or staff? Okay, at this time, we are going to open that hearing up to the public. But because we want to hear from everyone online, in the room, if you could try to limit your comments to about three minutes, that that would be. Very nice. But we do want to hear from everyone. Who wants to go first? Okay.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Great, thank you. First of all, I want to thank you for hosting this hearing and actually for your commitment and service to our community. I, in reviewing the materials for this, realized how much work you have to do to constantly prepare. As well as the staff, but you still have to spend a fair amount of time and I I do thank you. For those who don't know me, I am Joan Main. My husband and I live on Still Creek at number seven. We support the concerns and objections of the neighborhood concerning. The way in which this project is being proposed. We do support the notion of people building on their property. And we understand the town's concern and need to support ADUs. Philosophically, I also support the idea of a mixed family development. I think that can have some lovely impact on grandparents, grandchildren, et cetera. However, we are asking the applicant to take three very specific, very doable actions. To resolve the concerns of the neighborhood. And to in fact, respect and implement ASRB recommendations. Number one, we ask that the applicant actually implement your prior recommendations. Both your site planning recommendations and your building design recommendations. And to do that in a more comprehensive manner. Number two. We would ask that the applicant abandon the JADU fantasy. And classify this structure as an ADU. And some of the materials that you've received from the residents. Will give examples of how they might choose to do that and why. Number three. We ask, my husband and I personally ask that applicants fulfill their commitment. Previously made both to you, the ASRB, and to us. To keep open the trail that has historically been used as an access and emergency point. It is an old logging trail. Number seven, our land owns about at least seventy-five percent of the trail. The last few feet of the trail are on number ten, as you've seen. But that's, I don't know, thirty, fifty feet. It's a very small amount of quite a long trail that goes to our driveway. Our driveway is lined with redwood trees. When a tree goes down, if neither we nor the fire department nor our gardeners can move it in time. We have used that trail to get out. While Kristen is correct, we have another small trail from that goes up to our lawn. It is too steep for a car and it is too steep actually for the John Deere. I don't know what it's called, the John Deere thing that my husband drives around to put in logs or do things like that. It's too steep for it. So we can't use that. We could, of course, have another trail made. We could do that. We could do that. The only place we could do that would be right at the boundary of the property with number ten. That's where. Things are not very steep and we could do that. We could take out a few small trees. And do that to gain the access to the street. Our house is not visible from the street. So the small structure that you've seen on the trail. Was, I believe, a shed. I don't know for what purpose a former owner built it. When we bought the place, we thought we would do something with it, but it's infested with animals and. Needs to be taken down, in my opinion. My husband may have a different opinion on that, but we don't use it and it's a locked door in it. Okay, so those are the three actions that we would ask to be taken. We also ask that. No, I I guess ask is the wrong word. I'd like to state that we view personally. That the ASRB recommendations have been extremely reasonable, very doable and fair. And that applicant has chosen not to incorporate them more fully in their design is a big disappointment. It could be done. Additionally, we find the eighty-four-page paper that applicants have submitted to this hearing. Contains many misleading factoids and we ask you to move forward with your considerations. Focused on the relevant facts, not irrelevant information. Here's my emotional appeal. Just to put out what it is. Skill Creek Road is a very forested and special part of Woodside. It is completely unlike other parts of Skywood Acres. Neither photos nor videos convey the depth of peace and perspective. That exists when you walk down that road. It's impossible, it's impossible to share it. We urge you to come to visit the site. I I think one of you has. All of you have. And we hope that you. Kind of felt that sense of special peace that the redwoods give you. It's a, it's truly a privilege to live on this street. And so we ask. That the neighborhood objections. To encroachment on the set, front setbacks in particular and to the size and scale of the. Of the proposed development be put into the perspective of people who live on this street. And neighbors who choose to also walk the street because we are enjoying Wonderlic and can. And this is a way to get into Wonderlic.
Get to Wonderlic from the trail, like some from your address. So you're seven.
Yeah.
You walked, so you walked past ten. I didn't walk the trail, but I we got pretty far down.
It's a, it it's lovely and people. I don't know. It's a, it's a great place for children to actually learn to appreciate and respect. The environment as well. And we have a rescue dog who's gained a tremendous amount of confidence. By being able to go in the forest. Obviously, we have ten acres, so she can go in our forest too. And learn how to jump over logs and get muddy so I can spend time cleaning her up. But you know, it's, this is emotional. It's just a special street that deserves special consideration. That's really what I'm saying. So we're asking that you really did not, you know, require the applicants to do what you've asked. It was extremely reasonable and we hope that you will be able to. Think more, think very carefully about what is being asked. Thank you very much. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer those as well. We did. Thank you.
As a reminder for those online, if you'd like to make a comment, please use the raise hand feature.
No problem. Hi, my name is Terry Bronstein. Some years ago, my wife served on this committee and is and also the planning commission. One of the charges that they were given, that she explained to me. Was you not only consider, she was obliged not just to consider. The current proposal as it was structured, but also what might happen to it in the future. So what we have here is three separate buildings. Each large, several of them quite close to the road. Who in the fullness of time probably becomes an apartment complex. If you really think about it, they're saleable separately. And they're each large enough to accommodate a family or multiple things. You will be approving the first apartment complex in Woodside. Oh, great.
Because we wanted to.
Well, that's totally, you know, it's just totally inappropriate for this area. It's also inappropriate for Woodside.
It it was a different.
I would imagine that the, what you approved wasn't set in a redwood forest in a purely residential community area, right?
Right.
Where was it?
We should focus on the project at hand. There are properties that are over one acre in size are allowed to have one main residence. Three ADUs and one JADU. So this is a relatively new change based on state law on the. The state required for this town's housing element certification.
In English, the state is trying to force you into multifamily housing. Okay, well.
Yeah, no, but.
I thought your job was to defend us.
There there are other things that go with it. I mean, the state likes that if there is going to be multifamily housing, that it's. Accessible to schools, accessible to local businesses and those sorts of things. So there's locations that work better.
Right, but this is not one of them.
I just want to be clear for the record, this is a single-family residence with two ADUs and one JADU. There's not a multifamily housing project.
Thank you. And do you want to take one online?
We don't have any, oh, there we go. Hans, I'm going to give you permission to speak. You'll just need to unmute.
Let's see, can you hear me now, okay?
Yes, we can.
I I'd just like to clarify something having to do with the issue that. Concerns access to the trail from our property over to to the road. I believe you have our cover letter, all of you. If you don't, perhaps Joan could share it. And in that cover letter is a map that we prepared after meeting with David and Kristen that illustrates. The trail in relation to the ADU. Is that accessible to you now?
Yes, we have it.
Okay, so if 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 you can refer to that. The Xs that delineate the the story poles show one story pole slightly impinging on the trail. But the stairway to the ADU completely blocks the stairway. There's no way that a vehicle can go through the stairway. So I I I am at odds with the contention that the access remains. With the location of the ADU and the stairs in its current place.
Thank you. Did you have any other thoughts?
Just asked, just asked to clarify that. So that that's clear that from our perspective. We do not have access with the current plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it online? Anyone else online?
There are no other raised hands at this time.
Anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment?
They're trying to cook us. They're trying to.
Hello.
Hi, Helen.
My name's Aaron Amy. My wife, Gendy, and I are at forty-five Still Creek Road. And I'm just very troubled by the sequence of of meetings and responses that we've that we've had. I only got involved a couple of meetings ago. I think there may have been more before that, but you know, two, two of these meetings ago. You know, the whole community came in and said, listen, this is completely out of character and and you know, we we don't, we don't like it and. You know, the the applicants were told, well, you know, why don't you, you know, we're not told, why don't you? They were directed to to work with us to to gain community support. They didn't do that. They came back with another meeting. That was exactly the same proposal as the last one that we all had the same objections to. At that meeting, they were given a very specific set of 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 instructions in the motion. If I could, I I I don't know how it, how it, how well it'll work, but I'd love to actually play the audio of the motion that was that was made in past. Mr. Sullivan, you weren't here, I believe. Would that be all right? Can I do that?
It stays within your three minutes.
Yep.
So I would make a motion, I think this is the panel's one, of continuing the, continuing one more round. And we're asking for mass reduction. We're looking for a reduction of the tower. We're looking for a potential removal of carports and. The length of the number eight corridor, if there's a way that you can compress the buildings to be closer together and. Look at how that doesn't affect the landscape as much by rotating building or something of that nature or moving.
And I also think maybe moving ADU to that and if it does have, you know, vaulted ceilings or something. But if it's more of a mass, what are you going to see when they're scrolling down, when you're taking your horse down?
I don't, I don't know how how well you can hear that, but 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 the the point I wanted to make was what was asked. And I'm happy to share the 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 full, the the full recording if it's helpful. Similarly, when it was summarized by by Mr. Sean, you know, he said, bring the buildings back further from the road. Reduction of overall walls and size, the decks, the way they're seen from the roadways, bring the three pieces of the main residence together. Reduce the sign of the size of the main residence. There was a very clear set of things, none of which have been done in these plans, not not a single one. They're they're all, the buildings are are in the same locations they were at before, only, oh, instead of a variance, we're asking for an exception. Right? Well, this isn't an ADU anymore. It's now part of the main residence, but the building is identical. You know, the a building is the exact same building, but oh, we're going to make a front deck on it by shifting the top story back. A couple of feet, I mean, a few feet. It's not going to be, it's not going to make any difference in the way it looks. The reduction of the height of the tower, the architect says, yes, we're reducing the height of the tower, reducing it by three feet. That's not, that's not noticeable. The whole instructions that were given to the applicants. Were to reduce the extreme visual impact of everything that's being, they they that they're planning to do. And nothing has been done to change any of that. It's all, you know, gamesmanship with reclassifying this thing. Oh, now it's not an ADU anymore. Now it's part of the main house and therefore not subject to the size restrictions of an ADU. Oh, here's a, it's it's just. You know, it's making little tiny marginal changes, making a big production, but none of of what of what. The applicants were instructed to do has been done. And you know, I I think. I'll certainly speak for myself. I think it's true of others in the community as well, that it's immensely frustrating to keep having to come back. Before you with exactly the same situation and effectively exactly the same proposal. And being presented as if it was something different when when it really isn't. And all the, all of the same objections that we all had to it still still pertain. And I'm also concerned, I I just saw a a desk item that got filed from some pro-development organization saying. This is the maximum now of the number of meetings. So if 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 it is continued in this meeting, it could be automatically approved. So especially in view of that.
No, that's actually not, not the case. But what we're doing at this point, we're not really approving, is approving, we're just giving recommendations to the planning.
I'm glad to hear that 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 briefing was inaccurate, but I I I would nonetheless request that you not continue it yet again. And simply reject it because this process, it's just, you know, it's it just becomes exhausting to everybody and and it kind of wears us down where. Nothing is changing. The same proposal is coming up and being continued and coming up and being continued and coming up and being continued and nothing is. being continued and coming up and being continued, and nothing substantive is being changed. So we would just request that you reiterate, you know, what you said last time in the process of rejecting the proposal, because I think they've had a lot of bites at the apple already and haven't made any substantive changes. Thank you.
You know, I do have one question for the applicant. That's okay, you can sit down for Kristen and David. If, I actually liked the ADU across the street. I really did. I liked the way you set it down. I didn't realize the spheres were on the safety road. Would you be willing, because you have all your, go on the record, you have all your, if this gets approved by the Planning Commission, would you be willing, since you have all the equipment there, to make the safety road instead of having them have to, you know, extend the safety road?
Sorry, I thought that that was made clear when I came up to the microphone earlier, that I said that in part of improving the access for the ADU, that because it overlays with that area and as it's a trail, like, yes, we can move the digger three feet to the right and therefore...
And you can make them a safety access?
I mean, as long, I don't want to make a promise that is going to like ding us on grading, but I mean...
Well, with reason, with the Planning Commission, Planning Committee.
Sure, yes, there will be continued access. I don't know, again, I don't know how we can achieve that best, and I don't want to like promise something that I can't actually deliver on ultimately. We will do our best. I don't, I... Thank you.
Thank you.
For everybody that lives on the mountain, it's understood that when there's an emergency, it doesn't matter about property rights, it doesn't matter where a car is parked, the primary responsibility is for everybody to get out safely. So of course, with regards to however that is actually designed, as we propose it or else, you know, this has come up every time, and every single time this comes up, we answer in the affirmative that in an emergency, access will be allowed.
But there's stairs now, are there stairs now on the access? I mean, is a car able to sit around the stairs?
With a full parking spot next to it that can fit a full car.
So, yeah, that's all I'm really asking.
When we designed that, we took that into consideration to ensure that a car could drive from the trail to Still Creek Road unimpeded, as long as the road, you know, nobody was using that as a parking spot, which was why we put two parking spots on the side, so nobody would need to park their car on that section of driveway for that express purpose.
Thank you.
Sheet SK six that shows the road, where they're pulling the driveway onto the property, and then there's no parking spot at the end of that, or there's no, the stairs don't block that, they come off of that and go down the hill.
We understand this is frustrating. It is for everybody, but the challenge here is that it's not all that easy for everyone to totally understand the plan set. So we understand, don't be frustrated, let's just try and get on the same page. No, I know, but it is frustrating, David, so we understand. Let's go on, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Jendy. I live in 45 Still Creek Road with my husband, Erin, who just spoke. I'll make this short, but I just want to point out that, you know, we built houses because we want to build homes. We built homes because we want to live in a community, right? So one of the first recommendations during the first ASRB meeting was for, you know, the applicant to gain community support. And I just have to point out that the lack of community support here on this project, and it's growing, the opposition, right? Like, on the community response letter, every single person who's living on Still Creek Road, you know, including the Sunrise and the Skywood houses that are on the corner, have said, no, we don't want this project to move forward. And from the last ASRB meeting to this one, we also have a few more neighbors living on Skywood and Sunrise that are in adjacent areas that I've signed on and say, we don't want this, you know? Because people, right now, the story poles have been pulled up, we have to drive through that road and looking at this monster, you know, complex every single day. People realize that what a disruption to the rural feeling of this community is going to be. So I really am pleading for ASRB to consider the feeling of everybody else who's living in that community, who's living on that road, and, you know, hear our frustration. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to say something?
Good evening. I'm Simon Klemperer. I'm resident at number three Still Creek. Thank you all for taking the time. Thank you all on the committee for taking the time. Thank you all for the staff for staying late and being here. I know that you have been inundated by paperwork this afternoon, and particularly troubling, of course, these two threats to sue the town if the project is not continued or denied. I had been going to talk about the five meetings and the obvious loophole that if no progress is made between meetings, one can keep coming back and satisfy the five meetings without moving any closer to success, in which case your only option would be to deny this project. The other claim in these legal threats is that the setback condition is not objective. I would say it is totally objective. It's 30 feet from the front, or 50 feet from the front, or eight feet from the side, it's laid down everywhere. And if we look at the lengthy reports submitted by the applicant, they list the other four buildings on Still Creek Road. The closest to the front is 45 feet, right? Ignore everything else in Skywood, which is a homeowners association of which we are not legally part. 45 feet is the minimum setback, and the average, of course, is about 200. So I believe that one could design this project within the existing setbacks. I believe that there's an JADU, great. And if the double bedroom and the double bathroom and the laundry and the, there's something else in there, are not part of the ADU, great, put them down in this brand-new thousand-foot basement as a guest space, and then you've got room to move back across the road. It, there's the lovely ADU above, and then there's an 800-foot mechanical and storage space with beautiful windows on three sides and open to the terrace. That was ADU number four in the previous proposal. It's now simply not counted towards the space requirement, the exception for the maximum building, because it is mechanical and storage. If half the ADU was down there with stairs or an elevator, again, one would cut off the front of the ADU, and it would be in the right distance. I firmly commit that if there are no exceptions required by this project, I will be thrilled to welcome all three, four families into this neighborhood. I think they're great citizens, and I think this project is fully doable.
Anyone else in the audience that would like to? Joan, okay.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify one thing because I do have to go home tonight and live with my husband. The problem, as you see in his, in the drawing on SK one, where our access point crosses their land, he has, as an engineer himself, taken to look at, could he actually get his, what is his John Deere thing called? Whatever, whatever it is. He could not get that by the stairs and the corner of the ADU. So we're asking them simply to move it a little further, I guess that direction is west, away from the property line, and then, in fact, it could be open for an emergency access. That's all. That was...
Thank you.
No raised hands online?
Thank you all for coming, okay.
Joan doesn't mention about her driveway. Her driveway is the steepest driveway I've ever seen. It has been covered at least twice since my 47 years here. It's been covered at least twice by landslides? So this is not an academic question. You have to be able to leave their property by some other route.
Thank you. At this point, I think we're finished with the public hearing. Everyone's gotten their three minutes, or, you want 45 more seconds?
I want 30 more seconds. Simply, the discrepancies between the description and the plans, and one that stands out, is the covered carport that is shown adjacent to the garage. Either there are covered carports or there aren't.
I don't think there are covered carports.
In the plans.
Those have been removed.
If we pulled up the plans, ma'am?
Right, well, I think they were just recently removed.
No, in the latest iteration of the plans. So you are being asked to review plans that show a covered carport, and you can see this on, you can see it labeled, well, you can see it in the renderings actually before. There are, you know, it may be that I'm out of line here, it may be...
No, no, that's okay. I think the planners can clarify that better than we can.
You can reference a plate, they can bring it up on the big...
Right, so I'm looking at outline of covered parking on SK one.
So if I can clarify, on the side of the garage, there's a cover. So the carports that were referenced, the last Planning Commission meeting, were two freestanding carports. So there is one in the front that shows where it says two parking stalls, there was a carport proposed there, that was removed. There was one across the street that also was a point of discussion, and that one was also removed.
So it's only my sense that when the comments made by the applicant and the planning staff say, you know, there seems to be these discrepancies in some of these areas.
No, thank you. And that's something that we're taking a look at.
I don't know when in the process...
There's not a carport. There's not a carport shown, that's what I'm...
To clarify, we removed that covered parking, but it looks like the architect left the label accidentally on the plans.
Thank you.
Hi, Bruce Bastel at 105 Sunrise, and I just wanted to flashback to the end of last meeting, and I think that at the point of rejection, Pat Delgavio said, I think you're trying to do too much, and from what I can see, I think we're still trying to do too much. So I would really encourage you to reject this. Thank you.
Thank you. Quiet, no more online? Oh, David, no, we've already heard from the applicant, okay? At this point, well, if we have questions in our discussion, we can...
No one online, no raised hands online.
Okay. So do I close the public hearing? And at this point, what we're going to do is have board discussion. I'd like to hear from my other board members' thoughts. Bob, would you like to go first?
Can we get a clarification on some of the discussion in the materials regarding by meeting rule or some sort of criteria? Clarification, what we need to do tonight? Are we just saying yes, no? And if it's a yes, it just goes to Planning Commission to continue the process?
The ASRB is a recommending body.
Right.
So the ASRB will make a recommendation tonight. The item should not be continued. We've had two hearings of this iteration of the project prior to this. This is the one that includes ADU across the street. So the ASRB can accept the recommendation, the staff report, the ASRB can recommend that it gets approved with specific changes, or the ASRB can recommend that the Planning Commission deny the project outlining reasons why, such as not addressing the specific comments that were presented last time, and should focus on which comments were not presented. So the ASRB will make a recommendation, and that should occur tonight, and then the Planning Commission will review the project because of the setback exception, that's the only reason it goes to the Planning Commission, that they review the project in its entirety. And they will take action on the project one way or another, and that decision is appealable to the town council.
Thank you for clarification.
Just make sure you speak into the microphone.
Just talk to them instead. Well, just some comments that have been brought up, and we felt the same way, or actually, for myself, I felt the same way, that in some of the comments, it was, no, we cannot do this, or it's not feasible to do that, and I understand, design and construction, everything that goes into making these decisions, but I really truly wish there was not a setback exception or a height exception. It's pretty massive when you see the power, the power poles, when you see the story poles up there, it's really massive, and I truly believe the amount of light and the amount of window light from the inside coming out and the light around the outside of the property is going to totally change the concept of this neighborhood. I mean, we're all dealing with the potential for the changes that are going to occur, and to stay on topic with where we are today, I know these people want to keep the neighborhood sane and safe as it is now, what's the compromise? Is the compromise that you agree that you won't ask for a setback? Is the compromise that you don't ask for a size exception because the project is pretty massive as it is, 8,000 square foot compared to, I don't know what their, or six, I should say, I don't know what the sizes of the homes up there are, but is this so out of proportion to them? Is that something that should be considered? And our mission is to keep the rural community environment. Is this feeling rural? Does this feel rural to you? And is it, how much will this ADA mechanical turn into the unit that initially was if the names are changed on the next plan set?
And I just want to clarify that the only exception that is discretionary that's being applied for is the setback exception. There's no longer a request for a height exception or a height variance. There is a maximum residence size exception, but I do want to clarify that several years back, when the town council modified that exception, it's simply a formula, and it says, if you meet the formula based on your lot size, you shall have that exception granted. It's not a discretionary action. So for example, if someone just adds on 500 square feet to their house, and it puts them over the 6,000, they would need a residence size exception, although it wouldn't go to any hearing body, it would just be part of a building permit to evaluate the formula. So the, before... It's simply based on your lot size.
Slot is, you know, a different kind of a lot.
It's just simply based on your lot size. And the main reason they kept it as an exception, which is often what throws people off with that word, is because there are other parts of the code that provide limitations based on the maximum residence size without an exception, and they didn't want to go through and modify all of those different code sections.
Just that it would be ideal if they do address the staircase, the safety, the fire issue, I think that's a good neighbor. And I know you said you have, but I think it's still, by what we're looking at on the plan, doesn't look like it's been addressed. I just had a couple of comments to make. I have to say, from the start, I have like the materials that are selected, I think that they match a lot of the other houses that are going on in the neighborhood. It's a good choice of materials, and I like the idea of the ADU across the street. I mean, I walked down there, and that seemed very reasonable, and I liked it. Now, I didn't realize that there was a problem with the roadway, and I think that needs to be addressed.
To reiterate, from a town staff point of view, there's no requirement that the town can impose on people to ensure that other property owners have rights to cross their property. I just want to be clear on that.
The house was on fire down the hill.
There's no require, without a recorded easement, there's no requirement for the town to impose that people provide access. I just want to be clear.
Just talking good neighbor. It's just good neighbors that, I mean, we all share gate codes where I live, so, you know, it's having that neighborhood community feel. But I am troubled by the size of the house and how close it is by asking, although we don't approve setback exceptions, that's not for us to approve, it is very... It is very close to the street and it's lit up. There are a lot of lights and it's massive. I mean, I love the idea of an extra JDU attached to the house. But if you have a 6,000-square-foot house, I mean, that, couldn't that be broken up a little bit? And have multiple families living in, in the big house, the main house versus, you know, the different separate residences. So my, my biggest concern is that in some ways, they have made some small changes that we've requested. Getting rid of the carports, take, reducing the size of the tower, not asking for the height variances and all of that. But it, it still gets back to our original, the spirit of what we were, everyone was saying in the beginning, that you're going down this beautiful scenic lane that's very small, by the way. And you come across this massive house that's lit up very close to the roadway. And we all were hoping that it could just be pushed back some. I mean, that ADU number two could be pushed back some. So my feelings are while, that they haven't really addressed the spirit of, of what we, I think, as a board, were trying to express. So I, I feel that there's more work to be done. I mean, we're not at this stage now. We're at the end of the road for us. All we're doing right now is making a recommendation to the planning commission. So before we make our recommendations, are there any other comments from the board discussion that you thought of?
As a newer member of the board, I would just like to comment that I've, since starting, read the history, the background, the comments, and then went up to the site and actually drove it. And you're right, it's a stunning neighborhood. It's a one in a million. But I have to be honest with you, for the amount of controversy it's created, I was shocked at how nice it looked. I thought the story poles were setback in the hill. I thought the setback was reasonable. A lot of the issues are just people's opinions and it's fine. I don't need to challenge anyone's opinions. But considering how contentious it's been, I expected something a lot more onerous and a lot more challenging of what I thought were pretty reasonable guidelines and established city criteria for how to build a house in that neighborhood. And it's unfortunate it has been so contentious. But I think that we need to, at some point, move it on to the planning commission and decide how this is going to proceed and it's up to them to take it from us.
Well, I think at this point, do we make a motion?
Yeah, so it sounds like there's two board members that share similar concerns. I think the best thing to do is provide a recommendation, if it's for approval or denial. And then looking at the table, it's probably best to look at the staff report on page seven, starting on page seven, and going through and determining which of the items that have been addressed and which ones would be the basis for your decision that you feel that have not been addressed in that recommendation to the planning commission. So for item number one, under site planning, it talks about revise the location of ADUs two, three, and four. In this case, we're going to talk about the attached ADU and the detached ADU, since we no longer have three ADUs. So the detached ADU is the one across the road and the attached ADU is the one on the same side of the road as the main residence. And if you feel that this comment still remains, you can provide that in your motion. And so we can just quickly go through these and then you can identify which of the items. So this is item 1A.
Can we bring those up for?
Sure. Can you put them up, Sarah?
Thank you. We'll track together.
So, so first off, if, if there, are you looking to make a recommendation to deny the project based on the fact that specific, some of these items were not addressed? Then if you just want to make that motion, then we can go through each of the items.
I would like to make a motion that we deny this.
And then we'll go through each of the items here and then we'll look for a second. That makes sense? So we have item number one and this is to revise locations. And in this case, we're going to talk about the attached ADU and detached ADU. And if you felt that this item wasn't addressed appropriately, that would be one item you could continue to include in your motion.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're still very close to the road. I mean, that probably is my biggest concern is that it's, it's very close to the road and very light, I mean, a lot of lights.
And then the second one, 1B, is to locate the garage with a JADU further away from the roadway and close to the main residence and then thereby reduce the length of elevated enclosed hallway.
I don't know, Sarah, do you feel like that was reduced?
The, the, their applicant, there's a large grove of trees between the two buildings. And in order to do so, they would have had to remove the trees. And they decided that they would like to retain those large redwood trees. They did not move that further back.
But it's, it is possible to remove those. I mean, they removed 63 redwood trees already.
It's a, yes, it's something, so if, if the concern is to continue that they, you felt they didn't address that and that they should remove the trees, then that was way too.
Which would mitigate this, if we remove those.
It could help to.
There's still plenty of redwood trees around there.
So item 1B, we felt it wasn't adequately addressed.
I also ask on that one, not knowing exactly the placement of the redwoods, would a small reduction of the size of the unit allow the redwoods to stay?
It would be tough. That wasn't the comment. I think we should focus on what the comments were last time. And so the next one is that they were asked to remove the proposed carports that are adjacent to the proposed garage and within the front setback. And so that was just for the one that was near the garage, but they removed that one and the one across the street.
Right, no, no, I'm happy with that.
And then we go on to the building design. So 2A was to reduce the massing of ADU number two by breaking up the structure, which could include the removal of the vaulted second-story space or stepping ADU number two further up the hillside. And they did make some changes there, if you felt that wasn't adequately addressed.
They didn't step it up.
They, they pushed the second story back a bit. It didn't remove, it didn't move the entire structure further up the hillside. So you'll.
Pull up the image on that one, potentially, the rendering?
It's really the, you'll see better on the side elevations where they stepped the building back. So before that was a flat base of it and so they stepped that second floor further back.
Right, no, I, oh, I saw that, but.
So would you like to keep that as a comment to your motion?
Our goal was to try and get it further off the road, but.
And also reduce the massing. So we reduced a building and put a patio up there.
So you keep that as part of your motion? Yes?
Yes.
And then along with shifting the garage locations, this is a comment 2B. Along with shifting the garage location, determine if the tower element can be reduced or removed. And as they noted, that that was reduced slightly. But it is necessary when you install an elevator, there has to be a space for your mechanic. But, but it is within the height limits. We'll remove that one from the motion and that was the last comment. So what we have is a motion to recommend denial of the project based on the applicant not adequately addressing comments 1A, 1B, and 2A.
At that point, we did not have the lighting plan. So, well, I could, Pat's more of an expert on lighting. I'll let her address that.
Well, just asking that they can give a better representation of what the lighting would be like. And I think that would be really helpful if it were on either the nighttime rendering potentially, because I think it's going to be pretty bright on that hillside.
Okay, so expressing concern about the proposed exterior lighting and.
Quantity.
The quantity and.
And the wind.
And the windows for lighting mission.
Back to this mechanical room four, it, it, it's allowed to have windows?
So sure, it can, it can have windows. There, the applicant reduced the structure. They're going to have to make sure it's not more than 800 square feet. And that new changes to the ADU codes have allowed for downsloping lots to be taller in the back. So before, this project would not have complied with that. It was too tall in the back. They also had two ADUs in the building. That was pushing it over the size limitation. So they removed the two ADUs. They reduce the size, will have to reduce the size a little bit further. And then they'll comply with the height requirements, which they did not do before. But we'll, we'll put a note about the, the proposed amount of lighting being proposed and off-site lighting impacts.
You've done in the past about, and when having so many windows, is we looked at the glazing on the windows to be sure that it wouldn't.
Yeah, that, that wasn't, I mean, that's been part of the project throughout the process. It wasn't something specifically brought up before, but it can be noted.
Honestly, Sage, there were so many pages. We didn't catch it.
I, I understand.
So I have a motion.
Is there a second?
Yes, I would second.
What was the proposal again?
It's to recommend to the planning commission to deny the project based on not adequately addressing comments from last time, 1A, 1B, and 2A, and noting the new concern now that they have the lighting plan related to the outdoor lighting.
Yeah, I would avoid to approve it.
So you would just vote against the motion if you did not agree with that, correct?
May I share a camera?
Oh, yes.
Member Delgavio?
Yes.
Member Sullivan?
No.
So that completes the ASRB review of this project. All of those who have attended and participated, you'll get a copy of the letter sometime this week. And the planning commission hearing is scheduled for 6:00 PM on November 19th, Wednesday, November 19th. And notices will also go out in relation to that as well. The planning commission will then review the project and they'll be actually taking action on the project, one way or the other. And then from there, there will be a 10-day appeal period in which anyone, whatever decision is made, can be appealed to the town council.
Sarah, it made you all.
We have a couple of little things left on.
I've been there three times, dude. Every meeting.
We still, we still have just a couple of minor items at the, for the rest of the meeting?
Sorry, the meeting's not over.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. We're.
We have a couple of minors to wrap up.
At this point, I think, oh.
Don't worry about it.
Okay, I think we're done. We voted?
Can we just wrap up?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. We still have meeting business to attend to.
We need to go home, too. We'd love it.
So at this point, we voted. We've made a motion and we voted. And then is there a director's?
Yeah, so all of this, we could include a director's report for the month of September. And I won't go through all the details. One highlight now of our, you know, my, the most fun highlight of our report is how many more units did we create? And there's only one new ADU in, in September and no new single-family dwellings. Hoping to get some more in the upcoming months.
I'm working on one myself.
And, and I do want to note that, you know, in the past, we've had comments made, you know, for many of the projects that we're not trying to provide more ADUs on the property and that if applicants could kind of look at ways that they maybe could add a shower into a building or something like that, that would qualify as an ADU. And I do want to note that based on that, that staff now and all of our letters that go out, so we don't need to make that comment every time, is that all the letters we go out for all applicants with the comments from the ASRB, we just have another paragraph indicating how many that they provided. And if they want to look at other opportunities for ADUs, they can meet with town staff to do.
I, I think that's fine, yeah.
But we are, we are making sure that people are aware of what opportunities they have. But with that, I don't have anything further to.
Okay, at this point, I adjourn the meeting at 5:54.